Good evening. I would like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Today's date is July 11, 2022, and the time is 6:06 PM. I would like to call upon Commissioner Rounds for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Let's definitely, Chairperson, Commissioner Fresca.
President.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Rounds.
Here.
Vice Chair Carvajal.
I, here.
Chair Jimenez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications to report?
I have none, sir.
None.
Commissioner Carvajal, none.
And Chair Jimenez, none. Public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, except for comments for the public comment. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through Zoom application. Please note that you'll have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present or in the audience or on Zoom wishing to speak at this time?
No, Chairperson, we do not.
Thank you very much. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for June 13, 2022, Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion and a second for approval of minutes, please?
I'll move that we approve the June 13 minutes.
Commissioner Carvajal, second.
Approved by Commissioner Hernandez and second by Commissioner Rounds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, public hearing, adoption of mitigation negative declaration. A request for approval to allow the construction of a new 109,570 square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvements on property located at 12118 Bloomfield Avenue within the M2 BP heavy manufacturing heavy manufacturing buffing parking zone. This is adoption of mitigated negative declaration development plan approval case number 989. I would like to call upon Assistant Director of Planning, Quan Nguyen, to please present item number seven.
Evening Commissioners. Before you today is Development Plan Approval Case Number 989. Although this presentation was prepared by our associate planner Vince Velasco, he could not make it tonight. He does send a festive aloha from the state of Ojai. So tonight I will be presenting the case. So the subject property is located at 12118 Bloomfield Avenue. The general plan land use designation is industrial and the zoning is M2 BP. Applicant is Rexford Industrial. Subject property, which is located on the east side of Bloomfield, is approximately 5.2 acres. It's currently developed with five buildings totaling approximately 59,000 square feet. And the initial structure was constructed in 1953 with additional construction and site improvements continuing through 1975. Currently, the site is occupied by Crown Fence Company. Just a couple of photos of the existing properties. As you can see, there are several buildings, some of which are metal structures. Again, tonight before you is a development plan approval request to allow the construction of a new 109,000 square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvements on the subject property. This is a site plan of the proposed building. As shown, as you can see, the building is possibly divisible into two separate units. A one unit at approximately 61,000 square feet and a second unit approximately 48,000 square feet. The project also has a total of 16 dock-high loading doors as well as two grade-level loading doors. In terms of driveways and circulation, there are two driveways along the property's frontage. A 33-foot, 8-inch driveway along the southerly property and a 30-foot-wide driveway along the northerly portion. There's also a fire lane designated along the north and east portions of the building. In terms of parking and landscaping, as proposed, the property and building is required to provide a total of 170 stalls as well as a total of four truck parking stalls. As proposed, the subject development will provide both the 170 parking stalls as well as the four trailer parking stalls, therefore meets the current code requirements. In terms of landscaping, based on the property frontage of 236 feet, the total required landscape area is 8,221. As proposed, the property will have a total of 16,514, therefore significantly exceeding the required landscape requirements. This is the floor plan showing both units. There are both first floor and second floor office area proposed as well as warehouse areas proposed. The office portion for both units will be below the 15% threshold. Thus, does not trigger any additional parking requirements. Here are the elevations for the proposed project. As you can see, it is a very contemporary building with most of the architectural features concentrated along the property's frontage where it is most visible from the street and the public. This is a first of two renderings. This one is a view looking southeast from Bloomfield Avenue. Second rendering, view looking northeast from Bloomfield Avenue. So staff felt like that we should share this slide with you. It's essentially a slide representing the various iterations of the project. The first semittel, as you could see, the office area was really concentrated along the left portion of the building. With staff's comment and feedback, the applicant came back and added a additional office feature along the right side as well. Final semittel included height variations to the building. So as you could see, you know, through several iterations, you know, we got a project that is attractive and one that we can support. Just wanted to provide that as kind of a background to the elevations and how we got to the final elevations. In terms of the environmental review, the project did have an initial study mitigated negative declaration. The ISMND was circulated for a 20-day public review period which began on June 8th and ended on June 28th. It was also posted with the County Recorder's Office as well as the State Clearinghouse. We did receive a total of three comments. First comment from the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. Another comment from Mitchell to SI Attorney at Law on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And a third comment from the County of Los Angeles Fire Department. All comments have been addressed and provided. Any response to comments has been provided by EPD Solutions, which is also an attachment to your staff report. Not a comment related to CEQA, but staff also received a strong support letter from Leonai, Southern California District of Council of Laborers, essentially recommending approval of the project and offering their strong support of the project. As part of the review, staff did send out a public hearing notice. It was mailed out on June 30, 2022, also posted in City Hall, Town Center Hall, and the library. It was also published in the Whittier Daily News. To date, staff has not received any comments on the public hearing notice specifically. As mentioned previously, we did receive those comments in regards to the environmental document. So for your consideration tonight, as you make a decision on the project, staff offers the following considerations. First and foremost, the project does meet the criteria set forth in Section 155.739 for the granting of a development plan approval. And specifically, the project does not require any modification permits or zone variances. Second, the project involves construction of a new and attractive industrial building on a site that's currently underutilized and developed with structures that date back to the 1950s, including three illegally non-conforming metal structures. And lastly, the design of the new concrete tilt-up building provides a high-quality architectural design as demonstrated by the glazing, the pop-outs, variations in height, materials, and color. So tonight, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve and adopt environmental documents, including the ISMND as well as the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Approved Development Plan Approval 989, subject to the conditions stated within the resolutions, and adopt Resolution 212-2022, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. That concludes my presentation. It's my understanding that a representative from Rexford Industrial would also like to provide a brief presentation to the commission in regards to the project. So at this time, I'd like to call upon Steve Messura from Rexford Industrial, who should be remotely in the audience.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me? Hello, everybody?
A little louder, please.
Hi, good evening Commissioners. This is Steve Messura, Director of Metallism for Rexford Industrial. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Just real quick, you can go ahead in the next slide. Most of you are familiar with Rexford. We've been there before you for a couple of projects and we actually own 17 properties in Santa Fe Springs. This is our latest development and we are large publicly traded real estate investment trust. We focus exclusively in Southern California, so really try to make a difference in the communities that we are in, in Southern California, in Santa Fe Springs. And we own over 300 properties. Next, we basically are long-term owners. We have our own house leasing and property management. So we take good care of our properties for long term. And this is a spec building. Specative building, as most of our buildings are, so we don't have a specific tenant yet. So next slide. And we like investing, as I mentioned, in Santa Fe Springs. It continues to be, you know, big demand for industrial and the need for, you know, increased jobs, quality jobs on the construction and the tenant side. And we are members of the Chamber of Commerce, so we've been involved, as you may have heard, in other issues you guys have with the general plan and zoning updates and so forth. So we appreciate the relationship with the city and planning commission and the city council. And next slide. And this is just kind of an overview that all of our buildings, we have sustainability goals for doing lead silver. So this is just kind of some summary of some of those benefits. Where our solar will make our, the building will be solar ready, but we wouldn't do the solar until the tenant comes in to figure out the demand that's needed, the sizing, but all the other things that come with improved environmental and energy efficiency designs for lead. So next slide. This is just kind of an overview, again, of our typical community involvement with Rexford. I think you guys have mixed things before, but next slide. And then Quan has pretty well covered the project, but I just want to highlight a couple of quick things on this. You know, it's going to be a new classic building, replacing the the, you know, the older, the older buildings that were more outdoor-oriented. Now we'll have a, you know, have a new modern building that'll be more indoor-focused operations instead of the outdoor. And it will be securely fenced and as Quan mentioned, you will be, you know, almost doubling the landscape. Next slide. And this is just a site plan, which you've already seen. Next slide. And then just a quick summary of the benefits. Again, a new high-quality class A building, which also helps up, update, and modernize the area, which tends to improve property values as well. And bring in, you know, we'll bring in, you know, high-quality, bring in higher level, you know, quality tenants for the long term. So you have less turnover. We're going to have longer, you know, higher quality tenants. Lead silver certification, as mentioned, which is going to reduce impacts, which is definitely going to reduce impacts, energy impacts, for example, and other sustainability issues compared to what's there now. And it will provide, as I mentioned, quality, short-term jobs with construction, but also permanent job opportunities for long term. And brings new revenue to the city with the new construction and new assessed value and the public car fees and the other, the various fees that we have to pay to do the development, potential sales tax and of course utility taxes and property taxes with the new developments that you would not normally see with an existing building. I think that concludes my main comments. We have communicated with the unions. You saw the support letter from the union. We also communicated with the carpenters union that did submit the letter. So we're hoping that they're on the call to potentially extend their support. If not, we can discuss that more. I have other members of our team on with our construction manager, RJ Reeves, and our other higher management folks are on, as well as our consultants with EPD and our architect. If you have any questions, we're available. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item?
I have done.
I have one.
Commissioner Fresca says none.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Carvajal, what was that, that you said?
None, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Steve answered one of my questions, if they were spec buildings or not, and he said, yes, they were. So Steve, I would like to offer this to you, and we've mentioned this to other builders that, you know, we're, we have a lot of companies that do not generate any tax dollars for the city. And any of the new buildings that are being put up, we're highly encouraging the developers to bring somebody, a tenant in or tenants, that will bring some tax dollars in. And so if you would just keep that in mind, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, I hear you. And in fact, if staff knows of any existing businesses in the state that need to expand that are providing, you know, point-of-sale sales tax, we're glad to talk to them and connect them with our leasing firms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing at 6:27 PM. I know the application has provided, or the applicant has provided a presentation. However, does the applicant have additional comments?
Unless anybody's raising their hand, I have no further. This is Steve Messura.
Do you see anyone with the raised hand?
Chairperson, yes. We do actually have someone from the audience, John Tafoya, who would like to speak on this matter. If you could present to the podium, please, Mr. Tafoya.
Okay, great.
And we also have raised hands also.
Okay, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Good evening. My name is John Tafoya, Buena Park. I am a special representative with the Southwest Carpenter's Union. And on behalf of over 4,000 union carpenters that live in the city of Santa Fe Springs and neighboring cities, we are in strong support of this project. The reasons being that, like the presenter mentioned, this will generate good-paying employment, jobs, permanent ones, but more importantly, the construction of those. And it will give opportunity of, some of our residents here, the opportunity again to work in their own cities compared to having to drive an hour and a half to work and two hours home. Again, this will generate opportunities for them to be able to work in their cities. And that goes a long way when it comes down to family values. Now, with that being said, again, on behalf of the Southwest Carpenter's Union, we are in strong support of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this matter?
We have a bill. Yes, you?
Good evening, Commissioners. Bill Quisenberry, representing Launa Laborers International Union, North America. And I'm following up on our support letter sent from John Presciato, our business manager of our Southern California District Council of Laborers. We are in support of this project. Tonight's applicant has shown cooperation and a choice to employ one of our contractors, which in turn will employ our membership to help build this project if you approve. A lot of our members live right there in Santa Fe Springs, along with many, many others in the surrounding community. So, you know, it stands to reason it's better to work closer to home than having to get in the vehicle and travel somewhere far away and spend 12, 14, 15 hours dedicated to your job. So this is a welcome project. We support it. It's also going to provide training opportunities for our apprentices from our state-approved program. So that will further their careers in construction and help replace our aging workforce. So it's all a public good as far as a project. It's a win-win all the way around. And we urge you Commissioners to vote yes on this project and pass it on to the city council. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else, Teresa?
No, Chairperson.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, great. Do any of the Commissioners have any further questions for the applicant on this matter?
Commissioner Carvajal.
Okay. Planning Secretary, are there any comments submitted via email?
Chairperson, we did not receive any comments.
Okay, thank you. I would like to close the public hearing at 6:31 PM. And could I get a motion and a second for item number seven?
Commissioner Rounds would like to move item number seven.
Commissioner Hernandez will second that motion.
Great. I have a motion by Commissioner Rounds and a second by Commissioner Hernandez. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Let's definitely, Chairperson. Commissioner Fresca. Commissioner Fresca.
Yeah, I'm in motion.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds.
Aye.
Vice Chair Carvajal.
Aye.
Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
So ordered. Mr. Attorney, please.
Thank you, Chair. Commission's action on this item shall become effective 14 days after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action. The applicant or any other interested party may file an appeal to the city council. Appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within 14 days.
Thank you. Item number eight, consent item. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion or roll call vote. We have four consent items this evening. Staff received an email on Friday in opposition to the time extension for consent item number 8D. Conditional use permit case number 64-1 and zone variance case number 68-4. As a result, item number 8D is being removed from consent agenda and will be considered separately by the Planning Commission. For consent items A, A, B, and 8C, is there a motion and a second for the approval?
Commissioner Carvajal moves.
Commissioner Rounds will second.
Great. Motion by Vice Chair Carvajal, second by Commissioner Rounds. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fresca.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds.
Aye.
Vice Chair Carvajal.
Aye.
Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Consent items pass 5-0.
So ordered. I would like to call upon Assistant Director of Planning, Quan Nguyen, to please present item number 8D.
Evening Commissioners. Item 8D is for conditional use permit 641-4 and zone variance 68-4. It involves a 7.49 acre property, also known as a loon track. APN number is 8177-029-811. Property is generally located between the I-605 freeway to the east, San Gabriel River to the west, and the Southern Pacific Railroad to the north. The applicant is premier EV storage Santa Fe Springs. In accordance with Section 155.243J18, open storage yards are required to obtain a conditional use permit prior to the commencement of such activities. On June 9, 2008, the Planning Commission initially approved both the subject conditional use permit and zone variance. The CUP established, allowed the establishment operation and maintenance of an open storage yard use for RV storage. And the zone variance allowed deviations from Sections 155.5- And the zone variance allowed deviations from sections 155.451 in regards to frontage on a public street and 155.639 in regards to the one acre limitation. Said entitlements were extended three previous occasions. Once on June 22, 2009, for a total of three years. Again, on July 23, 2012, for five years. And lastly, July 10, 2017, for five years. That brings us to today. Just a quick background, this is the site plan for the proposed project. Project site includes a manager office building, some storage buildings, and 348 spaces, 124 of which are covered. Just some elevations of the, the two-story manager and office building that was previously approved, as well as the RV storage buildings. For your consideration tonight, staff would like you to consider the following. According to the applicant, they have diligently continued to pursue an end user that can utilize the CUP. However, the volatility of the economy and changes to the RV storage business has made it very difficult. The applicant is, however, also exploring other potential uses that may be more viable for the subject site. Therefore, providing the applicant with another time extension will keep entitlements valid and allow that their team to additional time to find an end user for the subject RV storage use or otherwise find a more viable use for the subject site. Staff is recommending a two-year time extension until July 11, 2024, subject to the original conditions of approval listed in the staff report. I do want to acknowledge that staff received an email over the weekend with essentially objecting or opposing the project. Said opposition letter was forwarded to the Commissioners over the weekend. That concludes my presentation.
The letter was, the email was received on Friday as opposed to the weekend on Saturday or Sunday, just for clarification.
And forward to Commissioners that afternoon, aren't we saying?
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Item number eight D, conditional use permit case number six four one dash four and zone variance case number sixty-eight dash four. A request for a time extension of conditional use permit CUP case number six four one to allow the establishment, operation, and maintenance of an open storage use for RV storage and zone variance case number sixty-eight to allow a deviation from the provision of section 155.451, frontage on a public street, and section 155.639. On the 7.49 acre property generally located between the Interstate 605 freeway to the east and the San Gabriel River to the west. APN eight one seven seven dash zero two nine dash eight one one in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone, premier RV storage, SFS LLC. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Presquez, how long would they be extended? A two-year or a one-year for them to, to establish whatever funds or needs to maintain a minimal amount of time for extension?
Commissioner Frescaz, the recommendation from staff is to extend the CUP zone variance for an additional two-year time period.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay, great, I would like to call upon the applicant if they wish to speak.
Good evening Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Of course, my name is Rocky Minasian, live in the city of Montebello. So I wanted to thank Chair Jimenez and the fellow planning Commissioners for their time this evening. Also want to thank staff for their presentation and their work on this. We are, as was noted in the, in the presentation, asking for an additional two-year extension on the original CUP. And would appreciate your consideration. The, I, I do, as much as I like to keep this positive, I feel I need to address the letter that was submitted. It, it is patently false and it's untrue. We have done an incredible job of dealing with the homeless situation and anything associated on our property. And this gentleman and his employees have been very appreciative of our efforts. They have a direct line to me if there's any issues, and there have not been directly off of our property. There are adjoining properties that we neither own, control, or responsible for, where there is some activity that, again, are not within our purview. So I just want to make that clear, that, that we have been a very dutiful neighbor and participant and owner in the city. And I don't appreciate, you know, us being labeled in a way that's not accurate. But having said all that, I thank you for your time. If there are specific questions, I will do my best to address them, but we would be very appreciative if we could get the additional two-year extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
I have none.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I do, Commissioner Presquez, in total, they've gotten two extensions for a, what was it, seven years?
In total, there has been three extensions for a total of 13 years.
Thirteen years, so this would be the fourth they're asking for, for another two years. Thank you, thank you very much.
Vice Chair Carbajal? Okay, is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay.
I should. In the audience, we do have Mr. Jack Thompson, but I guess, Mr. Thompson, are you going to speak at the point where it says, Planning Commission, were there any comments submitted? Email, is that when you're going to speak? Is Mr. Thompson available? Is he in the audience? I mean, is he in, on the call? Okay. Does he note to unmute himself? Okay. Mr. Thompson, are you going to speak right now? Or are you going to wait for when the secretary asks? Are there any comments submitted via email for item number eight? It really doesn't matter, it's up to you.
We're on that part right now.
Yeah, I don't know if he wants to speak, as. Mr. Thompson? Jimmy, can he hear us? Okay, Mr. Thompson, do you care to speak at this point? Let me call him, if he's. Yes, we can't tell you, do you care to speak at this point? You have any problem? Oh, I guess if you're unable to, since I'm calling you, I can put you on speakerphone and you can speak that way, if you wish. Okay, I'll put you on speakerphone. You want to tell him to identify himself and all the other stuff?
Mr. Thompson, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
I would like to speak on this issue.
Your mic's on top, that's your.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, we get enough feedback, but. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just, I'd like to point out that this property has been sitting idle for 15 or so years with a CUP on it. It's not going to get used probably for recreational. Because the value of land has gone up so high, it's recreational vehicles make no sense at all. As far as the effect on my property, we've had more break-ins, burglaries, fires than any of my other 25 projects in three states. And it just continues, it's just an attractive nuisance. And I'm sure if you check the police records and the fire records, you'll be able to verify that. I wish the owner the best of luck in marketing this property, is just unfortunately doesn't make a lot of sense as an RV property, at least on the rents they can get and what people can get for empty your zone land. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, did everyone hear what Mr. Thompson said? Okay, I guess it's a little difficult, Mr. Thompson, because I tried, I tried using my phone, putting you on speaker and the mic, but it was difficult, so. So let's try this, let's try this one more time. Okay, so repeat what you said, and I will then essentially say the same thing. So your first comment is?
My first comment is land values for industrial property have gone through the roof, as most everybody knows.
Okay, hold on, so his first comment is that land value for industrial property has gone through the roof, as everyone knows.
I mean, I just, we can talk railroad, but, you know, I don't, I think I pointed that out without.
Use economically.
Okay, hold on, so consequently recreational vehicle would not work economically?
Correct, thank you. Additionally, the fact that a normal conditional use permit is good for one year, and this property has been going on for 14 years now.
Okay, so stop right there. So normally, a conditional use permit is good for one year, and this has been going on for 14 years?
Correct.
Okay.
Hence, it's become a magnet for homeless people.
Okay, hold on, hold on. So hence, it's become a magnet for homeless people?
And vagrants.
And vagrants.
To jeopardize my property and its value and my customers.
Who would jeopardize your property and its value and your customers?
And that should cover everything.
Yeah, and that should cover everything. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
It's the only way I knew how to do it.
Good job, Mr. Morrell. Uh, do the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Thompson?
So he is a neighbor.
Yeah.
And, and what is the nature of his business?
Kwan, could you bring up the aerial, please? So he is to the north, his businesses are the storage, excuse me, his business is.
Is that the Dollar Tree or the Dollar Mini Storage? Is that what it is?
It's a self-storage facility, yes, you could see it on the, the blue. That is his property.
Okay, the one, the one closest to Rivera Road?
Yeah, his dollar storage.
And, and that property, that business is secured by fencing and gates, correct or no? The, the Dollar, the Dollar Storage.
There is. Kwan, could you? Could you point, so access to the, both the Dollar Storage and the subject property is through an Eastman from Pioneer Boulevard, but there is a gate, Kwan, keep on going to the right?
Yes, I, I.
Yeah, there's a gate.
I, I know this, yeah, I'm familiar with this.
Yes.
So he's stating that there's a lot of homeless camping out there now, my, you know, people are just invading that area now? In his property, in his property?
There has been in the past, yes. I have not been out there lately, so I do not know what the situation is, but yes, it has been a magnet for homeless people.
Okay, have we tried to address this at any point?
Yes, the applicant has, the ownership has, and so has the Police Services Center. They have worked cooperatively in the past to remove those individuals from the site.
Okay, thank you, I, I understand that this is a problem, not just at that site, but throughout the city and neighboring cities also, so.
Along the riverbed in particular, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Questions or comments?
I have no questions, but I, I do have a comment. I, I know about the homeless, this problem out there, and I don't believe it's an issue right at this point. I definitely feel for Mr. Thompson, but, you know, the world's had a problem the last two years, and pretty much a lot of everything just, or pretty much everything just shut down. It's kind of a hard decision whether, you know, with the, especially where the property's at, it's not visible from the street, what else are you going to put back there? You're not going to get something that would be people driving by, going back there, utilizing it. So what the proposal is, is a good use for that site. Yeah, it's a tough situation for both Mr. Thompson and the property owner there. When it comes around a motion, I'd like to make it, possibly make an alternative motion.
Okay, let me, let me ask one more. Okay, let me, let me ask one more thing, please. Who is actually responsible for the riverbed? Is that Caltrans or who is that?
Well, the, the riverbed.
Yeah.
Sure.
The riverbed is, uh, responsibility, the maintenance of that area is responsibility of the Cali County Department of Public Health. They manage it, they maintain it, they do cleanup of, of encampments and things of that nature. The problem that we have is the, the area that is. Uh, the, the railroad, which is the Southern Pacific Railroad Company, they are responsible for that cleanup and maintenance and, and the encampments and things of that nature. Then we have a third element, which is underneath the freeway, and that's the responsibility of Caltrans. So you have three parties that are required to maintain that area. Generally, they've been cooperative, um, you know. Uh, homeless have come and go, and so, um. But in that area, that's what it's shown as orange. Um, I think for the last three to four years, we have not had any occupants in that area.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clausel. Has, has there been any plans to do a joint venture with, with the three entities? In, in trying to maintain this area?
You know, because each one is, is, is pretty, they, they have a pretty good handle on their areas. And it's unfortunate that they almost play, the homeless pay checkers with them. So when they get moved off from one area, they move to another, and so that was.
Quite right, quite right. Thank you, Mr. Clausel. Thank you.
Yeah, Louis, sorry, I did not recognize you there, but it's safe to say that. We have had problems in the past, but based on your recent. Visit out there, and of course, Mr. Thompson would know more because he's right there, but has there been an issue lately?
Um, let me give you a little more background on what I do. Uh, every week I do a kind of a, you know, I, I drive around the whole entire city looking for homeless encampments. And I ident, I identify the locations. I identify if we have any problems. Usually problems result like in fires, uh, growing, uh, encampments. Believe it or not, even vehicles driven onto these encampments, so. A lot of times I just report it, and then we report it to the, either one of the three agencies. Or if it's on city property, um, we go ahead and contract with a, a cleaning crew, and we, we have it cleaned. Wayne's familiar with my job because I've always, uh, hammering him on some of the city properties. And so, um, and it's, you know, a lot of times I'm out there with police officers to, to help me enforce some of the rules and regulations. On this specific area, um, we have not had any, uh, problems at that location. You know, not normal for homeless. We do have an encampment there. I'm not going to say we're, we don't have them. But, um, they've been pretty quiet at that area. Again, I, you know, I, with, I almost make friends with the, with the homeless people, and I say, hey, don't attract attention to yourself because you're going to be the first on the list that's going to get cleaned up. They know that, and they're, they work with me on that, and so they've been keeping it pretty, pretty calm and, and cool out there, so there hasn't been any major problems.
Thank you. I, I think that's a good approach. I mean, there, that's a worldwide, um, problem. And I think we're just concerned with the infractions, and, and if there are people out there not causing infractions. It's a tough call.
Yeah, but regardless of the motion that the Planning Commission takes tonight, whether it is as proposed or. An alternative motion that may be proposed, what the Planning Commission can do is. If you do choose to go with the time extension, this will come back before you in whatever time period that. You need, and if at that time you say, well, it's been fifteen years and nothing happens. You do have the ability to revoke the CUP at that time. I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well, you ready for a motion or?
Um, actually, I have to call upon the applicant to see if he has the response to this. So, um. I would like to call upon the applicant to see if you would like to respond on this.
Hi, can you, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate it. Um, thanks for the additional opportunity, and, and I appreciate the conversation. That just took place, uh, and, and we, we agree, this is obviously a, a, an issue that, that's larger than us. But as I believe, and I couldn't hear everything, uh, that this, that the one city employee was pointing out, but we have. Cleaned that property and been very diligent about keeping the homeless off of the property for, for a number of, a number of years. The homeless that are currently out there are actually on the railroad property. Um, and an area that we don't control. Um, we have been out there, and we've tried to, to impact that, and we will continue to. With the context that we have and influence we may have, but ultimately, that is not something that we can do on our own. And so to that point, I, I just again want to reiterate that, that we have been a responsible and good neighbor. And, um. We continue, we aim to continue to do so, but also, I want to point out that, that, you know, we are planning on doing something with the property. As staff is well aware of, of various different opportunities that are, that are in discussion right now. And so, again, we, we. You know, this has got a very specific, you know, role in terms of what we can and can't do here. We will continue to be responsible as we've been in the past. The problems that exist out in that area are not on our property, and so there's only so much I can take accountability for. That said, um, we are looking at other ways of impacting that area positively, but, um. End of the day, we're asking for the additional two years. We will be coming back before this planning commission, before that timeframe. Uh, with, with what we believe is going to be a, a proposal that's going to be beneficial to the city, and something that's supported by staff. So, again, I, I just urge you to, to, uh, to take the recommendation of staff and, and grant this, this two-year. Uh, extension, and we'd be very appreciative of that, and I can, again, I'm here to answer any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Planning Secretary, are there any comments submitted via email?
Hey, man, it's the only comment we received was the email received on Friday, July eighth at eight o'clock in the morning, which was forward to your emails as well that afternoon on Friday, July eighth. No further comments were received other than that one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now's the time.
Well, I, I, I guess I've been working with Wayne too long, and I've known him, and my alternate motion was going to be to. Approve this, uh, the two-year extension, but to bring it back to the planning commissioner in one year. To see if what has happened between now and, uh, July twenty twenty-three. So I'll make that motion.
So kind of a progressive?
Right, just to see if there's been any movement. Uh, the applicant just stated that they have something, and they hope to bring something and, uh, to the planning commissioner in the near future, so.
So you're, you're kind of posing that within one year, we kind of give a look again, and if there hasn't been no progress, maybe we may reconsider.
Absolutely, yes.
Revoking.
Yes.
Do I get a second on that?
Before you.
Commissioner Carver Hall, second.
Commissioner Press.
Hold on, hold on. Before you make the motion, I need to make sure that we understand the motion. So it's to revisit. One year from the date of this meeting, right?
Right. The way I'm understanding is Commissioner Rounds, we're, we're going to grant the two years with a progressive of. After a year, if there's nothing happening at that time, we'll revisit and maybe revoke. Extension. Or end the extension, revoke it. Um, at one year, if there has not been any progress made at that time. Am I correct, um, Commissioner Rounds?
Absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
So grant two years, revisit in one year, and if nothing is done in that one year, then. The recommendation would be to revoke the CUP. Is that correct?
Yes, if, if voted on.
If I can make a recommendation on the motion, it would be. Granting the, approving the two-year extension, directing staff to return a report to you in a year as to. Mission can discuss what they want to do.
Excellent.
Okay, Teresa, do you have that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Can Commissioner? Can reiterate your motion again, Mr. Rounds?
Go ahead, Attorney.
Yeah, I'll repeat what I said, but I do would like the concurrent, uh, concurrence of the commissioners. So if I'm understanding the motion, it is to approve the two-year extension and directing staff to return with a report in one year.
Six.
Yeah, yes.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Round, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Time of Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fresca?
Um, I have a nay.
Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Round?
Aye.
Vice Chair Carver Hall?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Passes four-one.
So ordered. Mr. Attorney, please.
Thank you, Chair. Commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days following written notice to the applicant. The applicant or any other party can file an appeal. Uh, to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the fourteen-day period.
Thank you. Item number nine, announcements. Are there any commissioners that have an announcement that they would like to share?
Commissioner Carver Hall, I have one.
Okay.
Uh, the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club is having their fashion show. We're coming back after two years of COVID. And if anybody would like to buy tickets, it is for August fourteen. They're thirty dollars. And there's going to be door prizes and raffle and all that fun stuff. So let me know how many tickets you'd like. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioners?
None, none on my part.
Okay, I have no announcements either. Are there any announcements from staff?
I have a one quick announcement. I would just like to share with commissioners a flyer for, um, our upcoming study sessions and a committee forum. A stay session, uh, is anticipated next Tuesday for, it's a joint study session with Planning Commission as well as City Council. For the objective development standards and, um, another joint study session, August second. For the targeted zoning code update, as well as a committee forum, which covers both topics on July twentieth. Look forward to seeing you there.
Great, thank you. We all showed up like two weeks ago thinking it was a joint study session.
With the understanding, right?
So Quan, is the study session here?
Yes, it, it will be a five o'clock study session with City Council on Tuesday, as well as the following.
Be live. Well, it looks like it's going to be on Zoom too, but.
Right, yeah.
And Teresa can explain the seating arrangement, because that's what we had discussed, right? When it comes to your turn for comments, I guess.
And so my recommendation was that each planning commissioner, well, previously in the past, planning commissioners will actually sit at a table in front of council. So my recommendation was each planning commissioner will sit next to their appointed council member on the diocese, and staff will move off to the side, so you guys will have the whole diocese.
Okay. We have to.
Okay, um, any other announcements from staff?
So commissioners, as you noticed, I did give you a confidential envelope. That envelope actually entails your new city email address and password. Due to email size limitations, and just because of the new Gmail conflict that we're encountering, we figured that it's time that planning commissioners get their own city emails as well. So all future correspondence will be sent to your Santa Fe Springs email. If you want me to, so copy your personals, emails as well, please let me know.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I believe at first Commissioner Rounds that brought up the idea about the email. Was it you, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so we finally were able to do it, and thanks to Janet also for working on that, and of course, IT. And just one last thing. I think it's important to note, and I'm glad that Quang showed it, that. The finished product that comes before you, it's not the first iteration. As you can see, staff did an excellent job of looking at the first submittal and revising it. So that the final project is both aesthetically pleasing and something that. I guess is a benefit to all, so I would just like to thank staff and Quang for showing that. Thank you. Oh, Louis, hi.
I, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Okay. I would like to adjourn this meeting at seven thirteen. Thank you.